Stop recording, stop recording first.
So we're gonna. Do we know on roll call first?
Yeah.
All right, I think this has been very long, two months. Chair Colcat.
Yeah.
Let's hear Mike Lenti.
Are you here?
Commission of, Commission of Clarus.
Here.
Right? Is that right?
Alright, right.
Right. Gosh, always get. Coming to a call back.
Here.
Commission of Richmond.
Here.
Commission of all the way.
Here.
I'm a corn. So. Chair, you want to be the pleasure of Legion?
Yes, absolutely. Let's jam. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the people of the United States. One, one nation. Oh my God. If it is a liberty and justice for all.
Alright, now we are open for the public comments for items not on the agenda. I don't see anybody. So I don't see anybody on the, on the Zoom, we have nobody here. We close the public comments. So we on the next first items will be the draft minutes, through the minutes for the meeting called on March 20th, 2023.
You know why, maybe start April meeting, right?
I know, that's why I was a little wrong here. Alright, are we proved a minute? We're going to call.
Let's just give her a big minute if they want to read soon.
Yeah.
Motion. They have a motion due.
Chair Colcat.
Yes.
Commission of Clarus.
Yes.
Commission of. Right? Break.
Right, right, right.
Commission of Call Back.
Here.
Yes. And of Richmond.
Yes. Yes. She called for Martha's vote.
I don't think Martha is on.
Yes. Martha, you there? Martha, we cannot hear you. You're muted.
I think that is the, the PFM consultant, Monique, for doing the investment report.
Just spoke. Oh, you think that was.
I'm on, I, I'm sorry, I kept, I think you are saying Martha?
Yeah.
And my name is Monique.
Oh, you're right, so it's not Martha. Sorry, buddy, you might be Martha.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry, my name is Monique, it's Monique.
So excellent, that doesn't sound bad. But I voted pass.
And I am not allowed to share my video either, so.
So the next item is Monique from PFM, gonna do a quarterly investment proposal report for the quarter end in March 31st, 2023.
Right, good after, good evening, everyone. I'm unable to share my video, but I will be sharing my screen. If that is alright with the body, and I will walk through the quarterly investment report. And I'm unable to share my screen as well. Because of the Zoom meeting controls.
I just make you the co-host.
So, okay.
We're doing now. You're the co-host right now.
Yes, thank you, and I'm going to share my camera as well. Alright, you all should be able to see the presentation.
Yes, there we go.
Yeah.
Correct, great, and you should be able to see me as well.
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright, perfect, alright, good evening, everyone, thank you for working with me, we're going to full screen mode.
What if this is the wrong quarter? Yeah, it should be.
Give me a moment. Apologies for that, let me pull up the other document. Pull it up directly from the meeting packet. Technical difficulties. Okay. And let me know when you all are able to see the screen share.
He can only see you.
Okay. Alright, it should be sharing in just a moment. Okay, can you all see this?
There we go.
Yeah, there you go.
Alright, take three, thank you for bearing with me. I will go through the quarterly investment report for the quarter ending March 31st, and I'll go through market update and talk about the major economic stories during the quarter, and then go through the portfolio review for the city-specific portfolio. The market has been characterized particularly in the first calendar quarter by a few things. One, lingering inflation that remains well above the Fed's long-term inflation target. And so there was a lot of focus on economic indicators as they related to inflation, and there was a lot of volatility associated with any economic release that spoke to inflation being higher or lower than the target. Another thing that we saw during the first calendar quarter was the labor market showing its first signs of moderation. And a lot of economic uncertainty following the surprise failures of Silicon Valley Bank and Signature Bank. I'll talk a little bit about the steps we took during that turmoil in the market, but I do want to preface those comments with just a statement that the city had no exposure to either of these banks in its portfolio or First Republic Bank. The Fed tightening policy cycle by the end of the quarter was essentially almost complete. We know since quarter end, the Fed has raised its benchmark interest rates to its current range of five to five and a quarter. But during the quarter, there was a lot of uncertainty about the Fed following through on that policy because of the bank failures. But the Fed really tried its best to communicate to the market that it was firm on its policy decisions, and that they would continue to stay the course so long as inflation was high. During the quarter, we saw unprecedented volatility. There was a classic flight to safety, Treasury yields fell very sharply as prices rose. We saw the two-year Treasury yield fall from 5.07% to just under 4% near quarter end. We also experienced extreme yield curve inversion, where the three-month or short-term yields were much higher than yields available in the longer end of the market. In fact, the inversion was the deepest it's been in nearly 40 years. What's interesting about that is you may observe some of your overnight investment products providing a yield in excess of your longer-term bonds in the current market, and we expect that to persist so long as interest rates are high and the Fed is in this current stance. Another thing was credit spreads did widen, meaning that the amount of additional income that we received for purchasing a credit instrument like a corporate note or commercial paper or any type of credit instrument provided much higher yields versus treasuries than they had in the past. A lot of that had to do with the instability related to the banking issues, but those levels were not as wide as they had been during the global financial crisis. And the reason for that is, even though we saw yields, or we saw those banks fail, it was really specific to those particular banks. It was not an issue that was widespread across the sector like what happened during the global financial crisis of 07 and 08. Diving a little deeper, I have a couple of visuals to really show how much volatility existed in the markets. This chart shows just the changes in the two-year Treasury yield from January through April. And it highlights how much the yield on that benchmark bond rose or fell on any given day based on the economic news that was released. So earlier I shared with you that, you know, any bit of information that could influence inflation or the Fed's view of inflation really move the markets. You see at the beginning of the quarter on January 6th here, we saw our first hint of the job market cooling, and that was weak, weaker wage growth. The reason that was an economic indicator is that the Fed is actually looking to influence the jobs market through some of this policy. Conceivably, as interest rates rise and borrowing costs become more expensive, then employers will seek to hire less people, save money in other ways. Weak wage growth was a hint that workers had to take lower wages, perhaps the job market itself was contracting, and so the two-year lost 21 basis points. As you go through the quarter, you can see again, as the news shifted, by February 3rd, we actually got a strong jobs report, so interest rates increased. And that was the market's perception that the Fed would continue to hike interest rates as they had stated. In March is when we saw the biggest declines in yields day by day, and that was, you know, strictly due to the banking issues. You know, Silicon Valley Bank was closed by regulators on March 10th. We saw Signature Bank follow soon thereafter, and why you see interest rates falling, because the market had a perception that the Fed would slow down their hike of pacing to protect or insulate the banking industry. Instead, the Fed reconfirmed or reaffirmed their desire to continue on their path. They were very clear in their communication that they felt that the banking issues were isolated to those banks, and they committed to continuing on the path. And by the end of the quarter, they did increase their benchmark rate by another 25 basis points. They did another rate increase earlier this month, and that's where we are with our current interest rate range for the Fed funds target rate of five to five and a quarter. Nothing, oh sure.
Are you guys staying away from regional banks because of all of this?
Yes, we are staying away from regional banks, and you know, I just want to be clear, we didn't have many regional banks on our approved issuer list to begin with. But we tend to focus on the globally important systemic banks, the larger banks for our client portfolios, just because they're more prolific issuers, they have more diversified balance sheets. We're more comfortable with them from a liquidity standpoint, etc., than we are with some of the smaller regional banks. So we didn't have a lot on our approved list, and during the month of March, we actually put all banks on hold for a while just to, you know, again reaffirm our credit analysis on those banks, confirm that we're comfortable with them, so we put them on a brief hold, all banks. We lifted that hold on the globally important systemic banks and then other financial institutions earlier this quarter, current quarter. Any other questions, or did that answer your question? Okay, so another indication of bond market volatility here on this graphic, on page 17 of your packet. I just wanted to show the daily highs and lows of the two-year Treasury yield on the right in this graphic. And I think what we really want to convey is how much the two-year Treasury yield moved intraday. So the sort of, the length of the line indicates day-to-day movement, and during the month of March, we saw an average daily yield change of over 20 basis points. So that's really significant on the two-year. By the end of the quarter, the two-year Treasury was down to 4.03%. The right side of this graph is a measure of volatility in the bond market as a whole. And what you can see here is that bond market yields and prices move significantly, and they actually eclipse the level that we've seen during the early days of the COVID pandemic. So that just gives you a sense of how much the financial banking issues really impacted investor perception. Any questions there before I move to the Fed funds? Okay, great. Um, so on this chart, really wanted to highlight the difference in the market perception and what the Fed was communicated. There are a couple of lines on this chart, so I'm going to go through it. The blue area, the light blue area is the one-year range in interest rates, so I would think of that being between March 31st, 2022, and March 31st, 2023. And this just gives you a sense of how much interest rates have moved over the past 12 months. The solid blue line is the implied Fed funds rate as of the end of March, and you'll note that this graph goes through March 2023 through March 2025. So this line gives you a sense of where market participants anticipate overnight interest rates to be over the next few years. The dotted line at the top is what market participants expected it to be at the end of February. And the reason we compare February 2028 to March 31st is because within the month of March, that's when all of the banking turmoil was happening. And so it just gives you a sense of how much the market as a whole, investors as a whole, changed their perception of what the Fed was going to do just based on what happened during the month of March during those bank failures. The blue diamonds, on the other hand, are the FOMC projections, so these are what the Fed has communicated they're going to do. And the reason this is important is because the Fed is very clearly saying, because their projections have not moved, that they were going to stay the course. And that is why we had a very comfortable point of view that the Fed was not going to change what they were doing despite the banking issues during the month of March. Said another way, this is the Fed dot plot, and I'm very confident that you all have seen this chart before. This is a favorite exhibit of ours at PFM Asset Management. This is very similar data to the diamonds that you saw on the prior page, but this just gives you a sense of how that Fed funds target rate is expected to slow step its way down over the next few years. So we expect the Fed funds target rate to remain in the range five to five and a quarter through calendar year end. The Fed has been fairly certain of that, and for them to start lowering yields faster than anticipated, I think we'd have to see some fairly significant changes in inflation and the employment data. But they show a slow step down through 2024 and then eventually through 2025. Now, what that means for the city's portfolio is that shorter-term investments are going to continue to provide a higher yield. However, because we are expecting rates to decline over the next few years, we're continuing our practice of buying longer-term bonds for the city's portfolio. We want to be able to lock in some of these higher interest rates today before yields start falling back to their long-term targets.
All longer-term of bonds, or your current people.
We're buying, I'd say the average maturity range for the bonds that we're buying is likely two and a half years. So, so nothing too long, but, but right in that sweet spot, which is why I talk about the two-year Treasury a lot, because it's a great proxy for, you know, the average baseline rate that we're purchasing for the city's portfolio. Moving on, I won't spend too much time on this chart, there's four exhibits on this slide. There is change in real GDP, there's unemployment rate, there's the federal funds rate, and then there's the Fed's inflation indicator, which is a PCE or personal consumption expenditure. What's really important about this chart is the fact that the projections from March are very much in line with the projections from December. These are the Fed's projections of each of these economic indicators. So quarter to quarter, the Fed's viewpoint hasn't really changed over much. The only changes that you see is that they've actually projected slower growth for the economy for the end of this year and for 2024, but they're still projecting positive growth all around. So nothing in the Fed's projections indicate a recession, which shows that they expect us to have a fairly soft landing through their interest rate policy. Although they do expect inflation, and they expect unemployment to go up to 4.5% from its current pace, and they expect inflation to come down. The yield curve is shown here, so again, that one-year range is shown in the light blue, so think of the past 12 months there. And quarter over quarter, the changes have been that interest rates on the short end of the curve are a bit higher because the Fed again is raising those interest rates, and yields on the longer end of the curve have declined. And what this means from for performance, I believe I show on the next few slides, I will back up a little bit. Performance overall was positive for the quarter because interest rates fell. So again, you're in a one-to-three-year strategy, so again, average about two years, what we're purchasing for you. But total return, including income and market value changes, were positive, and so your income and your return for the quarter was positive as well. I do want to talk about sector spreads just a little bit. And I'll start by talking about corporate yield spreads. So corporate yield spreads were a bit higher this quarter, again, just as a result of the volatility. As because corporate spreads are the difference between Treasury bond yields and the corporate bond yields. You can see they started sort of 20 basis points or 80 basis points on the chart here throughout the quarter. Financials ticked up a lot because of the banking issues that we saw this quarter. Industrial stayed pretty much in their lane, although had a, had a bit of an uptick. As I said before, we sort of paused on financial purchases for a period of time during the first quarter as a result of the banking issues. On the right, the exhibit we want to share here is to point out that even though financial yield spreads are wider, they certainly were not as wide as have been during previous peaks. And you can see in 2007, 2008, where you were getting almost an additional 4% for purchasing financial debt. I'm zooming out a little bit to talk about spreads other than corporate spreads. We have a federal agency yield spreads, which were a bit volatile, didn't move that much. Corporate notes, we talked about asset-backed securities and mortgage-backed securities. So everybody saw some yield spread widening during the quarter. Again, that's, that's mainly a function of what was going on in the financial sector. Um, the next two pages are in your packet on page 25 and 26, and they just share some of our views on the sectors and our outlooks for the quarter. Any other questions about the market before I turn specifically to the portfolio?
We got somebody, I guess the elephant that wasn't in the room when all of this data was repaired, was prepared in potentially April and May is this looming default that's with the debt limit with all the children playing in Washington DC. If they fail to raise the debt limit, the markets are going to do crazy things. And I'm guessing that interest rates will skyrocket in treasuries.
That's correct.
Just at all, just putting things on overnight for the next couple of weeks to see what's going to happen?
Yeah, that's a good question. So our strategy for dealing with the I don't even know what to call it, the lack of plan for the debt ceiling is to avoid Treasury bonds that are near the sort of strike date, the date when bonds start to default. There are sort of three scenarios that I think we're contemplating. One, they actually raise the debt ceiling, they come to a last-minute decision to raise the debt ceiling, at which point we have no exposure to that date and, and everything fine, that's item number one. And then meanwhile, you have a lot of volatility in your, in the value of your portfolio holdings. Scenario number two is that they do miss the debt ceiling deadline, and they do have a technical default, and it's a short-term default. In which case, we would not have purchased any of the bonds that were up for maturity around that date. You know, consequently, those bonds did not get paid on that date or get paid a little later. But that scenario assumes that, that technical default is short-lived, you have a brief period of, of default. The third scenario is that you have a protracted situation where they do not raise the debt ceiling, they default on those bonds that mature near that sort of strike date. And then they, they sort of keep going, and so you have a waterfall of defaults. Obviously, nobody wants scenarios two or three, but our plan is to avoid having debt outstanding or purchasing debt within those maturity ranges for that sort of very short strike date. And if the government has sort of a protracted debacle, what have you around the debt, then we all have, have bigger problems in the world. And so the, the long-term implications of that is the value of your Treasury holdings declined significantly. The interest rate on Treasury that goes up very, very high. Investors no longer view the Treasury as the risk-free asset, and so that has lots of implications for liquidity of those securities in the market.
Okay, well, it's like, we're suggesting we do something, but. Well, no, it's interesting to hear what options. These are, these are people who advise, I guess I'd be knowing whether not buying treasuries for the next two weeks would be smart or stupid.
Yeah, I, I think our plan is to avoid buying short treasuries to the extent they can near that strike date.
Does your firm have your firm have any feeling as to if there is a short-term default? What would happen to the bond that matures during that period? Would it be? What would happen?
Would it be a technical default? I think there's an assumption that the Treasury would ultimately pay, repay that debt.
Bad face.
Yeah.
I assume that face with no additional interest.
Right. Right. The assumption is 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 those funds would be ultimately recoverable at face. I can't, it's hard to, it's not an I can't, it's hard to envision a scenario where the United States Treasury gives people less than a dollar on their debt.
They don't, but the but the issue is to finance that, to be able to pay that off, they're going to have to borrow treasuries at five or six or seven percent in order to finance.
Yes, if if there if there is a default of this type, I think the borrowing rates on treasury debt go up, period.
And so if you just
You know, we're we're already seeing from um, yeah, we're seeing from um you know, rating agencies, S and P, if you recall, is the is the rating agency that already downgraded uh US Treasury debt to double A plus plus from triple A. Moody's and Fitch had not done that. And you know, Moody's recently put out, um, you know, their thoughts on the matter and you know, spoke about uh downgrading US Treasury debt uh for a time. I think they termed it a recoverable default. Don't call me on that. I'm not 100% confident about that term. But there's there're going to be large implications, huge implications from a default of this type. It hasn't happened before in this manner. So I think we're all sort of speculating a bit about what it looks like, but it's hard to envision a scenario where you don't ultimately recover those funds at face.
What is the date that they technically go into default?
That I don't uh stop sharing from.
It's okay. So
Yeah, I want to say it's September.
You're not suggesting recommending we 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 do anything and not even to our suggestion of we stop any further purchases of treasuries for the until this resolve of that we we don't buy those things every day anyways.
Yeah, we're not buying treasuries every day, but we are, we are halting the purchase of longer of of treasuries near that strike date. And I'm I'm trying to pull up a note on on what that strike date is. I don't have it off the top of my head.
Does your firm feel that the third year or the 10 year will be dramatically affected by a default?
Yeah, I think all treasury debt is going to have is going to require a a higher yield.
And so as long as you hold them to maturity.
Oh, you'll get the face out of you, but that's
But you ever need to pull it.
Yeah.
You're going to be selling it a significant
Yeah, because, yeah, you're going to be selling it at a discount. Folks are going to demand higher yields for treasury debt.
Until the treasury goes and pays that off at base.
Yeah.
I do have a question. Um, so we just had, you know, the advice of investment policy to put this uh in the first camp, who can? I believe it is all short term, right? This is one time you guys were very clear around, right? So there's something um mixed in there because we were going to follow the camp accounts, but right now because of this, should we just hold on to it or what's your recommendation?
No, that's that's a good question. So the camp account is a shared pool and and the rating camp is very attractive. Whether you invest in camp or life, all of those investment pools have exposure to treasuries. All of them. And and that X date, by the way, was a few weeks, uh days or weeks after June 1st. So we're we're coming up on it.
No, no, not yet. We were going to.
I think we moved down slowly enough that if we wait a couple of weeks, I think uh we'll be okay.
It's the right thing to do.
Yeah.
In this case, yes.
We're coming up on it uh fairly quickly and I'm going to start sharing again.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to start sharing. Um, again, I'm going to go briefly through the portfolio. Back to full screen mode. Okay, just briefly through the portfolio holdings, uh the portfolio is in compliance with the city's investment policy. And any appropriate guidelines furnished to PFM asset management. Um, your sector allocation here, this gives you a sense of where you have capacity based on the city's investment policy. So we have plenty of room um in sectors outside of treasuries. Um, you know, we can move assets in the federal agencies, supras, negotiable CDs and in other classes. Um, the yield that market on the portfolio uh was 429. That's representative of what the opportunity is for yields at the end of the quarter. And the city is earning on its portfolio at 2.33% because you've purchased investments over the past few years when interest rates were lower. Um, but the good news is is you've been purchasing much higher yielding securities in recent uh months because of how much you have risen. Um, so a couple of things I want to point out um on the portfolio snapshot page. Uh, the portfolio itself is about 48.9 million dollars. We have been um doing a couple of things with the portfolio strategy in the rising rate environment, one of which was keeping the portfolio duration slightly short of the benchmark. So if you look at this duration distribution on the bottom right, you can see we have about 17% of the city's portfolio in thoroughly investments versus the benchmark, which only has 7%. Um, that was intentional on our part. Uh, we were keeping the portfolio a little bit shorter so that when interest rates uh rose, we'd be able to take advantage of that. Uh, now that the Fed has reached the terminal point of their uh rate height cycle, uh, we expect to bring your duration more in line with your benchmark. Um, so that is the activity uh we're embarking on this current quarter. Um, the portfolio uh remains of high credit quality and you can see your portfolio diversification to the right. So about 47% of the portfolio is in treasuries, which is consistent with a lot of government portfolios. Uh, we are, as as we talked about a moment ago, continuing to watch uh the debt ceiling um debate and are hopeful um that uh we don't uh actually uh default on our debt. But as I said, our our strategies are to avoid investments around that uh strike date, which is June 1st. And um are hopeful that if we don't have any resolution, that the um debacle will be short lived. And if it's longer lived, I think there's a uh a bigger problem that we're collectively um across the globe uh going to be wr- uh rattling uh with. Um, investor um sector allocation over time is shown on the chart here. Um, not too many changes in terms of our investor uh preferences in terms of sectors uh that we like of the portfolio. Our goal has been and continues to be to keep the portfolio diversified um to hedge against risk um in any one particular sector. Um, and we've been able to do that fairly effectively. Um, the portfolio activity is shown here. On a net basis, uh we did buy more treasury securities than any other sector. Uh, it'll be interesting to see what this chart looks like at the end of the current quarter. Um, but I'll I will keep you um apprised. I'm sure when we meet next, we'll talk about that. Um, you know, treasuries were you know, the most lucrative uh last quarter. As I mentioned, we were uh holding back on some corporate purchases because of the banking turmoil. So it did uh hold on corporate purchases, particularly in the financial sector for a while there towards the end of the quarter. Um, return uh was in line uh with the benchmark just about this quarter. We did have uh positive total returns. Uh, we're slightly under benchmark performance because we were a little bit shorter uh than the benchmark. Uh, we also had some diversification in the portfolio, which dragged a bit. Uh, treasuries were great performers this quarter. Uh, but we're pretty happy with this this performance over the quarter and uh particularly over the long run. Excuse me. And then my last formal slide is showing the poor earnings in the portfolio, which take out the uh market value fluctuation. And you can see positive um uh returns for the city uh over the period. Um, and with that, I will stop sharing. Um, and I'm happy to take more questions from the group.
We're good. Very nice presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, money.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Bye bye.
Right, do we have to accept this report for the
Yeah, I was gonna add, do I have a motion to uh present this uh item to the city council? Yeah. All right, we'll call it the end. Get this right, um. Uh, Sarah Colcat?
Yes.
Something should there a Claris?
Yes.
Right? Right, right.
Oh, right, he's not here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Could you pronounce the correct? Yeah.
How much in a uh uh call cap callback?
Yes.
Coming from Richmond?
Yes.
Commission of Weepel?
Yes, yeah.
All right, so both have passed. So the next item is I uh for discuss the financial policy.
Can we stick on the prior topic for sectors that uh well Jean alluded to it? Now I'm not sure what the answer is. Where are we at on thinking about life? And moving into that, then in your work, have we determined there's any reason not to do it? Because again, I pulled those rates this morning, the 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 delta is over two points apples to apples. So it's not obvious to me. If there is a reason that we're taking some risk, it would be good to know. But other than that, it just looked to me like life lets you get in and out of the 270 day portfolio that's dragging around old rates and can't let you buy in at current rates. And there looks to me unless you found some friction to be a huge arbitrage that we should exercise on the way up and then turn it exactly around on the way down the yield curve.
This uh the delay actually was uh they sent me the paperwork, but then that well late, the guy don't want to do the presentation, he's on vacation. So his assistant actually sent me the so all the questions to settle accounts. So I just emailed them back like today. So uh uh we weren't going to uh because late we have 18 million dollars right now. I was going to actually move to million to the camp. Um, but I little concern about the short term because they just sent US treasure. That's where a little kind of hesitant with the reports came out. That's what I was going to ask them.
Yeah, but we can the the, there's no question we can get out of late hundred cents of the dollar, move it to camp, hundred cents of the dollar and vice versa, right? We could all take Yeah, so so we don't have to absorb because economically, when we get out of late, we should get out at less than 100 cents on the dollar because their portfolio is not worth 100 cents on the dollar. And if we get out without being marked to market, we should do so. Absolutely.
Are you just the process right now? Is there no any other things to delay? It just the process, the paperwork? That's all it is. Yes.
This point. So you think
No, it should be like, yeah, before June should happen. I already emailed them, but you know, this is a questionnaire when you open accounts and all that. So I already sent that back today. I don't know, yesterday. Yeah. I just waiting for the process, yes.
Good question. But the council have any questions concerns about it?
I haven't presented the council yet.
I thought you did.
The investment policy, yes, we did.
We're just uh opening a camp account at the council.
Yeah, it did. It did. They don't have any comments, anything, no.
Yeah, because having done the math, about your 18 million, the difference today is 400,000 bucks a year. So I suspect we could find a way to spend it on other stuff.
Sure, yes. Um, we're not going to move all 18 million, although still we're probably going to move to 10 million. That's me, as we might have discussed.
So that's a couple of employees.
Yep.
Two hundred thousand. It's probably 200,000 on the floor. I bet you picked it up.
Are we okay to move on to the next one, agenda item for financial policy discussion?
You'll make our week uh maybe if you send us a note when you're done with camp.
Oh, yes, I will. Yeah.
The financial policy.
Um, this one, um I really just, I revised it because we are going to present our budget to the GFOA uh for the budget presentation award. And based on their best practice, I redefine some of the terms and what need be included. And the first point, it will, I uh expanded the what five balances, what's called the balance the budget, give a definition. So there is no uh, you know, uh confusion there. And other one is, well, I always talk about reserve. So where I'd leverage on there. When I will condition, we can use reserve and also how the uh how we do the recovery plan for the reserves. So those things I I added all. The last things I did all, it was the uh just redefining the capital assets, how we reported the second accounting term. We reported a historical cost, if it donated, and then we're going to report at the market value of the day of donation. So those things, I just really find uh clarified the definition of uh those terms. If that's all, okay, I make the changes.
Okay, so so let's parse this a little bit then. So definitions, I can understand. Okay, then you are changing definition. But there's some policy parts, you know, like what do we think is uh, you know, like, you know, you you use just read example to one third of the continues of balance may be used to finance capital acquisitions. That's a policy, the decision advised of third and not a quarter or a half or whatever, right? So I just wanted to separate this uh the center to one is a, let's just get past the definitional stuff. Uh, not, I don't know, I don't know if everybody's read this or does this need more work or or how do you guys want to? But then I I had read it, have a reaction. So, okay. Want to hear.
Uh, yeah, absolutely. But I just, I just want to uh separate the two because I think the one is more just policy. And then I think we can all weigh in and then the council will weigh in on them. And then the other is really just how we keep our focus, what's the process, right? So I'm uh, I give you much more leeway June to uh fix the definitions because that's uh basically following GASP definitions, et cetera. Uh, but I think wherever it's a, it's a, it's a kind of a decision about how, you know, conservative or aggressive we want to be about debt management and things like that. Then I think we should make a list of questions that we should sort of address and and uh and uh if there are be changes, then let's bring it with the council. One thing at a time about the policy, you know, I think there'll be four or five uh in my mind that are twenty. So
I think
We can build this down to to just, you know, then we can just have an agenda saying we're having a discussion about debt management policy or about capital reserve policy or something like that, right? So that way I think we'll be more clear about what is the never trying to address that supposed contract, who is all thing in one.
So you would like to dissect it in on individual topics so that we can go in depth and truly understand that topic?
Yeah, just because, but but not like, you know, that, my view is that I think that approximately four or five things that can move in the four or five dollars can move all of our finances, you know, and I think if we just take those, maybe we'll get her get to the bulk of it. I don't want to, you know, sit here and fix every comma. Uh, but uh, but definitely definitions you should do first yourself.
All right. So what do you want to like uh go through one by one, the red line items, just discuss? So um so
There's some things that are not red lined also. So that's why I was bringing this up is that, so this is, it's been many years since we've actually the commission has had a discussion about about the financial policy. I've I've been on this thing for eight years. My God, I'm turning out this year. But I think I've only seen one discussion on this thing and that too was uh very rudimentary. So it's been a while. You know, so I think this may be a couple of sessions before.
Yeah, do you want to do a page flip through it?
Yeah.
At least put a fence around where people have a reaction. Sure, yes. Love to hear your comments, Tony. Well, I'm just, okay.
Well, who wanna go?
Okay, we're gonna let Tony comment first.
No, because I, I didn't, I admit I focused on the redline stuff.
Yeah.
And I get to, to the special revenue classifications, and I think you wanna talk about debt management before we get there, because I just jumped to the redline.
Okay.
So.
Put it up on the screen. Can you? Or, okay. The package, you're also gonna share.
Yeah, we can.
Share it, screen.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure, okay.
Okay, so page one, uh, if you ever looking at it, so there's no mention of investment policy as being a part of our financial policy, and that was always kind of assumed and understood, both as a separate policy. Uh, so the question is, should investment policy be subsumed by this, so that it's all in one place, or does it make sense for it to be a separate policy, and completely outside of this?
Well, investment policy and debt policy for all city at workplace, they all separate away from the general financial policy, so they have to be separate adopted by the city council, um, so that's just based on my experience, especially for debt policy, that there are a lot more broad area, uh, normally reviewed by, uh, the outside consultant, when you issue, how you, how, when you're gonna issue bonds, how issue bond, how you do the refinancing, those type of terms, or normally that is, it's not like a tier, just the overview, but detailed will be, you know, I don't know how many pages, really long page of debt policy, yes.
Okay, because I think the, I think of those two, one of them's easy, because the label, I think, doesn't match what it says, so. Let me make a suggestion, do you think about it, June, and this overview, you have a bullet that's what, number six, it says cash management?
Yeah.
My suggestion is you redo this, I would call this cash investment management, because when you go back to cash management, it talks about the investment policy. And it says that if that's gonna be approved from time to time.
Well, you have like a, like a seven page investment policy, that's a separate document.
Right.
So are you suggesting that they should, they should say proportion to the investment policy document as an objective basis?
I think so, because it already kind of says that. Right. So, I, I think it's, yeah, it's there, and it's, it's commonplace that that's part of it, I just think it's, um,
You like to have clarity.
I would just say cash and investment bank, and instead of investment, we'll review the city's investment policy, and we'll make recommendations, that seems like what we do with investment policy.
Then, uh, same with, with the debt management, uh, all the debt management in this thing is pretty lightweight, it does not talk about our ability to, uh, issue bonds, et cetera, or anything. And we don't have actually a document that I'm aware of, the city does not have a document on what's our policy on raising debt.
A basic procedure of what to do.
Yeah, it just says, probably says, one says hire a, hire a consultant.
That's, uh, like, in which criteria, what triggers it?
Yeah, no.
What can be violent on bonds, and what should we buy, how long we should find it, what type of consultant?
So should we make that a license, that also part of the, where it says debt management, it's under cash management, the next bullet?
Good point.
Sorry, what, what do you wanna say, instead of debt management?
Is that the right term for it, just to leave it as debt management?
Seems pretty hard.
Debt issuance, I mean, I'm talking about.
Yeah, sure.
Well, it depends on, like, do you wanna, how much do you wanna talk, because debt management also implies how you pay it off.
Right.
Issuance and man. Correct, management, what type of sinking fund you develop, all of that.
That, and I kind of think.
Issuance is just the physical issuance of the debt.
I kind of think management, so, despite, that to me is, I just wanted to put the word investment in there, because I think we do mentally think of Yeah. what PFM does versus.
Exactly.
You know, they have forty-five, forty-seven, forty-eight billion dollars, and we got another eighteen billion, we run away from them, correct, for working capital purposes.
Okay.
So that seemed okay.
Okay.
So we change anything?
At the top level?
Right, that was our.
Well, leave it, leave it as debt management, but cash and investment, so insert a separate bullet for investment, we just made it cash and investment management?
Yeah.
Revenue, expense.
John?
This is the, a bullet on systems.
Well, if we're gonna. That's an interesting question, I mean, where do you wanna put IT management, should it be under a financial procedure?
Well, as relates to financial systems.
Voice mark, we need him. Man, point of view on how I mean, a lot of corporations would say that, yes, that's a chapter in financial.
But, well, it definitely definitely affects it, if the IT system is not robust enough, we can't do financial systems, our financial systems go down, the question is.
That's all we did for this question, but I, it's up to you guys. It's far too much, no, it's okay, either way, just as long as.
Okay, so maybe we need a bullet, they're saying, uh, uh, systems, financial systems.
We definitely need an IT procedure.
Right, yeah, under the theory of proliferating bullets is probably not.
No, I meant for each one of these, there should be a, there should be a section, right?
Yeah, so, but if, if you were gonna do that, and what you guys may wanna think about, you have financial reporting, right, you can have financial reporting and related systems, or financial reporting.
I, I can live with that.
Information technology for above or something.
Financial reporting and, and system, and related systems, and related.
Supporting. And supporting information technology systems.
Yeah, you can, in the, this header on this page, under overview, could be shorter, but the, what you talk about in the.
Yeah, we heard somewhat in it, actually, this is the relative subject, I mean.
Know your place well, take it, because you, you have critical information technology systems, and if you don't have access to that, you're pretty much dead in water. So we need to make sure that those systems have a certain amount of robustness.
But you're limiting, and the way that this is happening, it's limiting that, that IT to the financial systems, not to dispatch and, uh, to all the other systems that are running in.
Yeah, I like where you're going.
No, no, we don't wanna go there, no, that's why I like the financials, reporting and, and related systems, so that it's only talking about the financial systems, we're not I don't think the financial policy should cover all of IT, that does not make sense.
Maybe procedures for all of IT as well, but at least this.
Audit procedures for the financial system?
Yeah, that was, the, the last one I was gonna bring up was audit, but, uh, I don't know. Again, I'm, uh, taking Tony's, uh, advice about not exploding bullets and trying to figure out where audit would fit. Because that's it, that's a big hole that we brought up last time, is that we need a upside of the financial commission, or subset, subset, or other people to be on an audit committee for the city. And they only have to be three times a year, which is fine, but that shouldn't be. Yeah, to actually go over the details of the audit, but just, just an independent for transparency, just outside, you know, somebody else also looks at the audit and has a conversation of the hour. So.
So you want to change the, uh, the financial reporting to financial reporting, and also include the related?
Financial reporting and related systems, and the annual review is where maybe we can put the audit. I need to do an audit process. The end of the week, you have just mentioned, and this, I stepped, whatever we call catheter.
Yes, no?
Was just looking at, you know, the, uh, the GFOA standard for the financial policies, which it do how like include the financial planning policies, uh, revenue policy, expenditure policies, and then it did mention about like inventory and access, that's what I added on. Well, it's not like standard for, for that, that policy, that's a separate document, uh, mainly focus on the balance reserves, how to replace the funds, those are, uh, the, the main thing that should include in the financial policy. As far, as far as the audit, I'm not sure, uh, what's the, you know, when you have audit present to the finance commission, would you have audit present to the city council, I'm not sure, was the policy about audit?
Well, I mean, I'm trying to press, uh, this discussion for the council, to say that, that one, we should have a policy that there needs to be an audit committee. Yes, two, it must need a few times, it has to then, three, it has to be independent of other people. Uh, so if, even if we just said that and got the council to approve that, I think that would force us to have an audit. Uh, you know, it's not a commission, it's not a commission, it's a committee of some sort that has.
Right, right.
And it, you know, I'm just trying to force the conversation.
No, it's a good conversation, but college is going down the right path. Because the purpose of an audit committee is just to delve into the one issue of the audit. And so they go through the methodology, it's another set of eyes to look at the holistic system and make sure it's properly being audited. And I, I couldn't agree any more.
It's, it's more just for transparency, right, I mean, I just, it's good to have the audit being reviewed by somebody else, instead of people who.
Uh, but you may get it, be able to get into this bullet, right, because when you go back to what this bullet leads you to, yeah, the second paragraph, you know, not surprisingly, it says an annual financial audit will be performed by an independent accounting firm familiar with. You can certainly add something.
Yeah.
That's all it says, yeah, yeah, the audit will be presented to an independent audit committee, the financial commission or committee, they're all, but just appointed by the council, or, you know, things, yeah. My guess is, John, that they think proliferating subcommittee, this.
Yeah, just subcommittees.
Mm-hmm.
If I may, so, sorry to interrupt, so that's a very productive conversation, I'm learning a lot from it. Um, commissions are being restructured, and one of the restructuring, I think is going to limit commission's abilities to form subcommittees.
Yeah.
And it's not because of this commission, but there have been problems of round act violations or near round act violations, when some committees have been formed. So, so I'm curious, I mean, is there an advantage to having a subcommittee, as opposed to having the entire commission, take a hard look at the audit and report to council?
Well, I mean, okay, first of all, I think that will make it not twelve, but maybe fifteen meetings for the commission. Uh, so that's one thing, you know, we're asking the commission then to meet a couple of times, in a compact way, maybe three times, you know, in two months, uh, because, uh, additionally, uh, just to handle the audit. Uh, and then, uh, I think having someone who's maybe not even on the commission being on it is not a bad thing, just to have another set of eyes, so that they just look at the audit, that's the most.
Okay, I, I see where you're going on, and, and if that's a recommendation you wanna make to the council, I'm behind you a hundred percent, I don't know the city attorney's gonna do with it when she gets it, uh, speaking only for myself, I, I like the idea of competent people looking at the audit and giving input, especially if they're residents. I think the subset of residents that are really able to give intelligent insight into the audit is very narrow. And, and of course, it has to be that, that the citizens who are giving, uh, their opinions have to be trusted by the council as a whole. And that, that, that also makes it challenging, I know that the commission as a whole is trusted by the council, and I think a subcommittee of the commission would be as well, so I, I, I like where you're going, I say I don't wanna make it, you get twenty shots in the kitchen.
You're saying that the, that the financial commission has the responsibility to, to hold the audit, not just have a presentation like we do now, like, you know, a one we meeting before, the audit is not complete until we've done it, and then, so we need to cycle this and present it properly, I guess, then, I don't know, I mean, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with that, but, uh, but the whole commission.
Here's the problem, is probably being the only former auditor, former CPA license holder, not to be told to do this, no matter how you destruct it, so the rest of it's up to you guys, is, because I say never to avoid being the, you go supervise the order. Yeah, oversee the order. Um, but, however, I don't think it's dramatic increase of effort, that, wh- what I and maybe for John's benefit, I think the part that's lacking is normally the audit committee, the board, whoever it is, would normally have, with all due respect to everybody, people understand, the meeting with the auditors on the front end of the audit, and be, um, be, be involved in the auditor telling, here's the risk areas where we wanna spend disproportionate time and settling that out, so that when they come to you with their work and what in the, and our book can weigh in, in their world, or called, quote-unquote, required communications, they've done, nobody's saying, well, did you look under this rock, we've already agreed on which rocks they're gonna look under, that are above and beyond generally accepted auditing standards, and you kind of have more of an end, and so I, I don't know that it's.
So that's what I meant by a couple more meetings, you know, but, uh, and a subcommittee would be great, but if subcommittee is not going to bend, go away, then the whole commission will have to take it on, but, uh, it's fine, but I think we should specify that, 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 that needs to be made a little clear. Yes, that's, that's not just a flyby through, uh, through the commission, you know, right now, we see the audit, you know, and it's, uh, we haven't had the two preceding conversations that Tony just described, right, as to, okay, this is, this is where our concern is, spend some more time here, what are you looking at, what are you gonna focus on, you know, we don't do that.
Good, because it's hard, John, for the auditor to, when he or she shows up and takes questions from seven different people, did you look at this, did you look at that? And you get, and I feel sorry for them, because they're trying to bang out their required communications, get signed off, get paid, and.
Now, we already, we already. I encourage you, make, make your recommendation to the council, I'm, I'm glad I was able to tease it out, I understand why you're going down this path, without our recommendation.
Okay, all right, so those are sort of the areas that I thought, you know, uh, you just sort of just make sure, to investment. Uh, I would like a, a chat, more conversation about debt, uh, you know, issuers to manage, and dispersment, raising, whatever, and reporting them, uh, systems, and then, uh, annual review plus audit. So those are through the four buckets where I thought, you know, uh, there are some policy decisions, you know, the language, I mean, uh, I really, I don't think that, I mean, what is an operating budget, and what's called revenue, and what's not, and, uh, you know, is too difficult to, is more definitional.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, but we can go through all those pages then.
Okay, I, I miss, sorry, no, if other people have comments, I actually, I agree with everything that's been said, I otherwise am on page eight, three, so, three or four pages bad, but.
Okay. So you have some red line, do you want us to share, just look at that quickly?
Um, yeah, I can go through that very quickly, yeah, so the, all the, this.
And, and, just what we're topic, the one thing you may wanna consider under debt management, that I think is now forgotten. And I don't know that, given the rates, we probably won't do anything with it, because we look like geniuses on borrowing it, but, yeah, but the, so I think we'll do nothing, but people have to remember the, and help me, could you, the community center debt, has a use it or lose it, prepay it, we'd know, I think, once a year.
Yeah.
And so I would just, and maybe it doesn't have to be in the policy, I would like to know that somebody in the building here has calendared when that is, somebody makes a permanent decision. You know, we're not gonna use some cash to prepay it, because right now, if, if one month treasuries or five something, we wouldn't use a nickel to prepay two and a half percent debt. Uh, but that day may come again. And, and, and my recollection is how it works is, um, that I thought there was an annual opportunity to prepay, use it or lose it, and then you can't prepay again for another year, that's not.
How would you put that on a calendar to make sure that, you know, somebody would do that? How is that, how does that work?
Well.
Well, I understand, but who, who, I mean, we've had a lot of turnover in finance, no disrespect or anything, but how does the city survive any kind of turnover for a calendar, that it was, what things are on calendars of people who've left, such as this, that we can rest assured are being taken care of?
By, um, actually, we do have a finance calendar for all those type of events, unfortunately, what Tony says is not on it, so, so this is like, we, we just heard this one, so I will go back actually a little, we do have a finance calendar to say.
I think that backs changed, maybe it's for standard, but get now, it's got something else now. I think that backs changed, maybe it's for standard, but it now it's for something else now.
Yeah, but you 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 have a count, right, that like they get their compliance certificate, so there's a bunch of stuff you do, and I'm just thinking there's one.
No, I understand, but it's an interesting question, is that. If you do have somebody who has about their personal calendar. Uh, I mean, uh, corporations have corporate calendars that everybody can see, so if a person needs to, we have a Los Altos.
Yeah, that that just raised it, cause if you hadn't lived through it, you could go a long time without knowing that provision exists, cause it was heavily negotiated.
Okay. Now that two point two rate is gorgeous. You guys look like geniuses. Always tempered. Okay, where do we go next? Uh, so the red line on operating budget was just a definition stage.
Yeah, I just defined what is called the balance of budget, so normally by standard, general standard is a recurring expenditure to not exceed the recurring revenue. And a total expenditure should not exceed the total revenue plus available funds. So the the second sentence, actually, it is include the maybe one time, one time expenditures. Uh, so that's, but normally it bounds the budget, it's called recurring expenditure do not exceed the recurring revenue. So those are kind of important, how, uh, what condition, I think you call it, is a balanced budget. That that's what I define the definition in there. Uh, that's the network.
Yeah, I I don't think we have a comment on that, so that's fine, you have. Set that red line. C I P, next page. This one. Now on one, on page seventy nine. So, uh, capital improvement program. Maybe there's a definition of what is capitalized and what's not, that needs to be here. Uh, so that it can be called capital and what is expense. I don't know.
There is a difference between the capital improvement program than the normal capital access. Because capital assets would define, you know, anything, it can be ten, five thousand or ten thousand dependent on nature. Uh, but this one is.
So that's what I'm saying, so we just put the definition in here, that you know, just because you bought a seven thousand dollar computer, it's not part of the capital improvement program. Right? That's capital asset, but it's not, it's not a C I P.
I think it define the purpose of C I P is says it should reflect current and the changing needs. But maybe as well as enhance the quality of community quality life, I think those are, you know, they have a brief. Um, start out what it is in here. Um. But you you want a more definition on the how to explain the.
Exclude, uh, capital asset, yes.
Sorry to interrupt, the the first sentence makes reference specifically to the five year C I P plan. Is that, is that not sufficient enough? I mean, when when I read this, I understood it to mean, this is our policy with reference to those specific items in the plan. They're either budgeted or they're not.
So let's say, you know, we're gonna buy a fleet of five cars for the place. It's not C I P. You and I know that, but it's not explicit, right? It's two hundred thousand dollars, but uh, we're not calling it a C I P program, it should not show up on a C I P list.
But as a capital access.
Right, so.
Exactly, you have a separate section someplace that's capital asset acquisition.
Yeah, something like.
I think she's wanting to perform finer definitions.
Uh, I just wanna make sure that, because that list to the runaway list, the C I P list has like seventy things on it, right?
Yeah.
It's everybody's favorite project on it, and some of those things are actually not capital C I P.
Uh, I understand where you came from, uh, I think the city also have a separate for the equipment replacement funds, it's called equipment replacement plan.
Yeah.
I think that's separate of the five year C I P. Because they are there, well, I understand it's separate, so that's how I think. Uh, is that, that's mainly for equipment and place.
You'll see, that's an interesting question, what exactly does C I P, because I, police cars are not included, so are we just talking building and roads and sorts?
Let's see, I feel like this remodeling for the, you know, the city council chamber, also we have a public art program. Depending to the community.
Surfacing isn't C I P, I don't understand.
Yeah, it is, it only surfacing, it is in C I P.
It's like almost an annual expense, we do that every year. It's not even capitalized, because it's it's finished by the end of the year, you know, we're resurfacing that damn road again every year. But you see, I mean, I can.
Yes, yes. Yes, we call that annual street or surfacing.
Surfacing, except, that's why, maybe that's why.
A series of definitions is not bad, you're bringing up some really good points.
All right, I can put some definitions, it's detailed, the capital improvement program.
Maybe it's, we just need to say it's, this is infrastructure only or whatever, I don't know.
Am I, am I change, you have a change to capital improvement and the major maintenance program? So that will. Right, annual street, uh, resurfacing.
But there's several things like this, that's what I'm saying, you know, like, I mean, I think somebody would bring up buying two hundred thousand dollars for cars and C I P, but it's not it, right? Yeah, so, so either we call this the infrastructure improvement for I I P or program or or something.
I think this is kind of regardless you capitalize or not, and then a sample equally by support like a public art program. It's not necessarily we capitalize, you know, that whatever that program is.
What I'm getting at, June, is that, that I think people uh, that start looking for budgets that they can go after, right? So, I need five cars, let's put in the C I P, you know, that's fishy, right? We want transparency and clarity that the council with the city and all people know. That when we say that all our money is assigned and allocated, it's allocated assigned to the right things, right? We can't just be double counting or going after other budgets.
Good point.
So.
We are not double.
I know we're not, thank God, but.
He's not suggesting anything to fear.
Right, people can say, hey, you know, uh, uh, we have two within in C I P at the end of the year, put into it, that's my cards with it, right?
That have to prove by the city. So I follow to five year C I P program, so it was preset by the city council and reviewed by every year we're taking off or something.
Also, they put anything on the C I P and move it up and down as they like, right, and they do that, so they can put those cards on it if they wanted to. Thinking it's C I P, and then nobody's gonna question it, it's not C I P.
Well, we do have a, um, the, just for that particular case of put a cars or whatever, all the city have. Uh, clear direction, we have to have a equipment replacement plan, like vehicle, like a flea plant, and then there will be rotating out. That plant actually has been created, uh, already, so those are.
That's great, but uh, but as far as we're talking about a financial policy, we should have clarity about what goes in this bucket, is what all I'm saying.
Okay.
That's all. So, some sort of definitional, uh, maybe even if it's an inverse saying, it is not. It is not this, it's not this. Whatever, I don't know how to do it, but uh, but. On the definition.
Okay. Um, revenue section, uh, I don't have any added.
So are we gonna, uh, then, uh, add some text and then maybe, uh, then review it next time and approve it? All these changes we're talking about.
This one?
So, yeah.
The management policy?
Yeah.
Um, we, but actually this one, I'm gonna, after you make the recommendation, and then I will revise it. You want me bring back to you and the people.
There is no sort of timeline on it, but I think it'd be good to just have one final decision, and like, you know, some of the red lines that we are moving now, just, you know. Get rid of those and then add the new red lines.
I can bring back on the next Monday, because we're short on the customer media time, yes.
All right.
Um, revenue session, which to leave as is.
In the comments on red name. Expenditures.
Revenue section. And cash management section, I will add a cash and investment management, the the fourth point.
So, so it would be good to have a line saying, uh, some reference to the investment policy. City's investment policy, or maybe just call it the city's investment policy document.
Do these documents have numbers on them, or they just have health? Like, is this document having document number on it and a revision attached to it?
No.
That's not a bad idea to do, is to have a certain.
But we do, every time we present to the city council, we do have resolution numbers for.
So you do have a, a control.
Yeah, yes, we do, yeah.
And you have a master document control list, right?
Yeah, city clerk office, that's them, yes.
The city's investment policy. Is that enough, that's just, just changing the title is enough?
I think so.
Yeah, it was here. I think just the title, cash and investment management, okay, now debt.
That management, uh, this right now, right?
That sustains finance and payments at a manageable level. So, I think in our recent past, the only debt. And I do mean in the recent past, as in I think for thirty years, that's a, that's recent past. Yeah, one, like, this is the only loan we have. Is for the building, for the thing.
I thought there was some little beast rattling around at Rosia Park.
Yeah.
Small, few hundred grand.
Uh. I think at that time, we were kind of wondering, you know, does a city have the right to? You know, for what's the criteria, and we made up a criteria, right, the criteria we made up was. Uh, in our conversations, and it took a while, is that, uh, we figured out. What was that debt service level the city could afford? Or should, uh, should apply? And then computed what the debt can be. We said, you know, let's only raise debt that can be serviced for six hundred thousand dollars, I think, because the number we came up with. And that translated to, well, billion actually, and, well, whatever. Now, because, uh, we don't need to know, you know, what's the implication of having that? And we said, okay, the implication is that that's opportunity cost of that most funds. And looking at our budget, and if we had done more debt, which we qualify for a hundred million debt, you know, I mean, we can get a lot of debt. Because, you know, the, our assets have a lot of value, you know, somebody could take over this program, the two acres around this thing, and. It's probably worth a lot of money, yeah, so it's not that we could not get more debt, the question was. What should our policy be about how much debt the city should have? So we came up with saying, as long as we can service the debt without impacting essential services, without impacting. Um, still having money left for some C I P, et cetera, and we came up, we computed it to be about six hundred dollars, right?
Right.
So, uh, so we had to come up with something on the fly, frankly, because it was not enough language in our debt policy for the, for the city. And fortunately, the council accepted it, and we got a ten million dollar loan, that's less than six hundred, I think, in annual payment.
Are you suggesting that we should have a formula?
Not a formula, but I, I mean. So there's some guidelines, right, as to how do you, how does the next, uh, if we want to get a fifty million dollar loan, a hundred million dollar loan, you know, should we do that or not? Because we will qualify for it.
Why, I understand, but if you're saying essential services, they need to come up with a formula that you say. Essential service revenues minus the services equals the maximum amount.
That's, that's not a static. Yeah, and so how is this different though?
I'm saying a static number, I'm saying a static.
The, the last sentence of the section. What would you say that's dramatically different?
To them, large, you want to get to finance.
So we all agree we're not gonna finance current needs without a lot of.
Yeah, uh, the boss of budget, it is recurring revenue can, and the minus, uh, uh, recurring, uh, expenditure, which is if you have that payment. That's recurring payment, the revenue had to cover, recurring revenue had to cover, not one time revenue, like our money, that's one time, that's not count.
You do have a formula later.
But that's why.
Well, it's a guideline, but it's a, it's a guideline for.
The guideline says three things so far, right, that's in here, it says, you're not gonna fund current needs, like, nobody takes a different side of it. Number two, you're not gonna fund anything beyond the useful life of what you're funding, so you're not gonna fund the balloon. So that seems okay, you know, way this side approved. And then the last part is, you're gonna know where the money's gonna come from.
Right.
To pay it, this doesn't quite open the door of this is gonna become a, which is what we did across street, which is, it's gonna become a general fund. Need each year to do with this.
You're not funding general funds through debt.
No, but it goes the other way, we're funding that other building through general fund needs, but I'm not sure you need to say it, it says. You're gonna fund it either through project revenues of which, just by that analogy, the community center had. The minimalist project rep, a little bit for Rexon Park, not much. And then otherwise specifically identified revenue sources, and I was sitting here saying, I think we had that, which is we said, we're gonna make a. Create a intergenerational burden on the general fund, and as when needed. Uh, we will allocate some park and loo to it, because in doing it, everybody confirmed you could use park and loo to service that debt. You know, and I'm not sure how much more you can say here and still make the same decision, feel like you're operating within.
Yeah, okay, so I mean, it's just a philosophical proposition, right, I mean, so, but, uh, which is, okay, so do we. We, do we feel good about leaving our children, or if our children can ever afford to live on some of those? You know, uh, somebody's debt for a building that they're going to use. I mean, you know, thirty years from now, that community center will be here, so why not let them pay for it, right? So, in that context, you know, is how we sort of said, okay, you know, it kind of makes sense to have that building at that. But, uh, but that's a little bit open ended, you know, why not theater, why not cinema, why not this? You know, we could make a lot of things that will have a fifty year life, right? Uh, so where, what, so there needs to be something and some other place, like, you know.
I'm doing, sure, the budget process, there's a one thing we had to calculate, it's called a debt limit. Normally, especially those tax revenue funded, like a general fund funded of budgets. It cannot exceed the assessed value with the formula, if you're talking about assessed value, and then times twenty five percent, and times fifteen percent. So those are, our debt cannot exceeding that amount.
Yeah, what I'm saying is that that will be a very high number.
What is it?
Our assessed value of assets would be a very high.
Yeah, but that's why, only times twenty five, the quarter of it, and then it was fifteen percent of that quarter. That is debt limits for.
Yeah. That's so, so that there's an argument, right, I'm saying one, okay, let's leave the city, then let's leave our, our children. Just I think that they're gonna pay for, gotta pay for it, you know, the other is still, let's leave them a completely debt free city, you know, so that if they have a downturn. They can actually handle it, you know, so there's a different approach to how people look at that, and what the, how conservative. Uh, you are in your finances, and will apply their own personal perspective to it. Uh, for the longest time, the city was very versed to debt and felt that, uh, we had wanted to lock to that.
Well, that's what everybody think, we're, we have enough like cash or reserve, obviously. But however, for past, especially past few years of the pandemic, we kind of like that those balance kind of went down, so now. Um, again, uh, by refinancing which building or, you know, is a city council decision, we presented it as idea. Of course, underwriting, just like a buying house, there is a lot of move you had to jump through to calculate if you can't actually afford it. Um, so they were not allowed to issue that if we can't afford, that's for sure. Again, uh, back to the balance, but we have to have, make sure we have enough recurring revenue to cover the debts. To make this, even if we can't covering it, so that that is not gonna be issued, because that's not balanced, but that is.
Services. So they make a suggestion, cause part of the way I manage like these meetings is I don't have dinner before I come. Why don't you, Kulche, take on the straw mask? If you wanted to edit this.
Yeah.
Uh, so that there's something that target practice on next time.
Okay.
I'm not feeling the need to overly work that out, but if you have some other thoughts, and part of the problem is. I don't sit up here, I don't make the policy, I'm completely comfortable with inner, what we did intergenerationally, cause we saved money out of a bunch of people's hide for years and years. Gave it over and kicked some of it to the other end, and effectively, probably thirty years worth of people. Really did pay for that building between the excess savings and the debt, so I sleep like a.
I mean, I, I, I feel that that's the right thing to do, but there are a lot of people in town who believe that that's. No, I'm with you. I mean, I I I feel that that's the right thing to do. There are a lot of people in town who believe that that's.
So, right, so you owe the straw man. Okay, want to touch this up. Say it would be a target practice. Okay, next time. Okay.
The next red line, just go through this quick is about balance. I actually, the city does not have a permanent funds. That's why I believe that from the false section. Um, that's the only thing I changed on the next section. And I didn't change anything for fault files of classification. And that's section I changed is special revenue classification. Um, since last time we did the financial plus, apparently we have a more special revenues like measure B, we are F funds. Pay fees, public art funds, those funds that is been um just added off after the last, uh, you know, financial policy adopted. That's why I just want to make it as whole.
Yeah, that's so cute. I only have one question, but there's one on here. That I didn't understand, which is the fifth bullet is storm drain deposits. And I thought the whole point was we don't have a storm drain fund. We don't have a revenue source. People diddled with that. People were up in arms that that ought to be part of the general fund. And I didn't think this exists.
This one, I actually don't have a law history on this, but I think one point time we do. Uh, we tried to pass the measure for the storm drain, but if I ever didn't pass.
Because it went nowhere.
There's going to be movement on that issue.
All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Right after you get the sewer. Yeah, increases and then come back to this one. Come on up here.
I think the timing sets right on.
Right.
Okay, yes, be fine.
So next one will be the fault balance levels. Only thing, uh, if, but this is I. Added the section of the intended use for review. When uh when what a situation we can use reserve, those are kind of standard language. Like interruptions in cash flows, example, like the the state holding back the. The tax distribution or loss of sales, those type of events. Um, so we can touch reserve, but it's not exceed forty percent of the beginning reserve balance. Those are the. Regardless how I got a forty percent, those are recommended by the G F O A, so that's where I use it. I'm not really have a lot of research of those. I just take. I believe that's the best practice. That's why they recommended. Uh, same thing for when we have emergencies like earthquake disasters, um, that's what the time we can touch the reserve. Uh, capital acquisitions, that's where states afford this. I had a goes to city calls of approval anyway. Uh, if we really want to purchase, uh, you know, uh, use contingency funds to uh purchase capital.
So so. Go first. Okay, so of every edit you provided, not just personally, the ones I had a strong negative reaction to. Were adding capital acquisitions and emergent opportunities to accessing. The reserve fund. So I I just think that philosophically. Isn't how I've ever understood nor were I that. So philosophically, here's how I understood this was supposed to work, which is. We had a target twenty percent. Gabe would tell you he wants a higher percent, but let's call it. We're successful. And finally, I think he finally got a refill to twenty percent. So you guys spent fifty, fifty five million bucks here. So let's call it eleven million dollars. Is what this fund is. The way I've always thought of that is you have sixty three million in cash. I know a lot of it's other funds. This is the eleven million at the bottom. That you're only going to touch. For a really good reason. And these two reasons strike me as. Financing decisions and liquidity decisions that don't strike me as. Holy smokes, we can't make payroll. And my personal view has always been this eleven million dollars is. Holy smokes, we can't make payroll and. I understand it has to go to the city council one way or the other, but philosophically, then I'll stop talking. It this ought to be set up consistent in my mind with that philosophy. The city council wants to amend the financial policy. Because we're going to build the theater, we're going to flex this ten million dollars rather borrowing it, or we're going to replace it. That's a policy decision. People up here can do it, but that. When I think of an operating reserve. That's not what I think the operating reserve is ever used for. But I'll stop talking. That's just how I look at.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's kind of like, oh, my God, what why are we just throwing there? I mean, uh, capital acquisition as a for the use of reserves is.
Well, I think when I, there's there's two sides. One is you say you said that situation. Another thing it is, what about we have a natural disaster happen like, you know, uh, city of paradise? The additional building, our building burnt down at the point time. You you got to have a building to operate and then that will be belong, I said, that's in that situation, there will be capital. You know, pressures because you need to have city hall or you have at least some sort of the building to do the operation for the city.
I think the five people sitting up here, even if the building isn't here, so they're out the parking lot in folding chairs, that's a super simple discussion of. We got to crack the eleven million dollars and do that because we got nowhere to sit. This doesn't say anything.
This leaves a a door open to all kinds of.
And 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 again, it's ultimately a policy decision. And I don't mean to speak for my colleagues up here. I I think the fact that the reserve fund was ever touched at all. We remain kind of not thinking that was really what should have been done. I think our view is. And then you guys are policy made to do whatever you want. Our view is it's the last eleven of the sixty three. And you're going to touch it when it's really a bad day. Because that's what's allowing you to do other spending and build that building is you got that eleven there or something bad. Goes wrong, but it ought to be something really bad, unexpected goes wrong.
Uh, we do actually the discussion had a uh like a facility of replacement reserve. Um, so those type, I mean, I can take this out. That's it's no problem, but it is.
Emergency opportunities and capital acquisition.
Yeah, we were thinking about to have just in case, you know, something. Happen on the facility.
We've got fifty million dollars first.
And you create whatever reserves you want to. I'm just reacting to. The twenty percent operating reserve, I think we just philosophically always viewed as.
That's how.
Really bad dark day and and. Uh, some of it got tapped. I think for nine 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 Fremont, which I would never have tapped it for. We managed to get through the trough in COVID. With the Fed kicking out the money, that was essentially what you probably otherwise would have had used this for your beds. I would have been sad. So I'd say these two inserts, we're happy to consider. Other views, but at least for me, this was not at all how I looked at the.
Even just for that twenty twenty percent.
I agree.
Okay, all right, I will take that out. Um, the next, the emergency of opportunities, emergent opportunities, that one is also.
Same.
I will take that out. Um, so other part of criteria for use. That will be a pretty much just depend on the city council decision.
Yeah, that's. They get the last word and so you go to them, they want to. Tap the eleven million dollars. That's fine.
But they cannot exceed the fifty percent of required policy and given here. That's the bottom line. We had to keep at least fifty percent.
You got to ask those guys. That to me is how. In how big the earthquake was or how severe the need is. I I don't feel. Because I think it's going to be such a rare. Event where you're tapping this thing. I mean, I think it's their judgment what to tap, but. Like I said, you're here, at least I've always had to explain this philosophically. You really can't make payroll and have real problems of meeting your responsibilities.
Uh, I'm putting here because of, I think that's like already what normal what's going to happen, right? Is if city council vote for use this for whatever the reason. Of this, we. That that's what's the language in there. So but. Again, this is kind of a a a clarification, more clarify what situation that could have touched. This is one of the situation for a city council voted, you know, we can touch reserve.
Did you not want to invite them to use the money?
I know.
Our company except.
All right.
That big ceramic jar that says cookies. That's that's.
He don't lie anyway, so that's. What about the replacement plan? For if we touch reserve be any, you know, what we discussed situation.
I was just saying, within sixty days, we got to have a plan.
Right, sixty days, we got to have a plan. And then.
It doesn't have enough many. Chief and I mean, just says you got to have a plan, doesn't say you have to replenish it and so. It's fine. I have nothing I have that concern about it.
Well, I think it's a prior matter. Gabe was pretty diligent about refilling.
Um, it it just says replacement replacement plan cannot exceed five years. Normally should not exceed the five years on here. If you see the five years should be, you know, proved by the city council again. So that's five years. Even cannot be replenished in the next twelve months.
And left to my own devices, I delete the last sentence, to be honest. Yeah, because it should be refilled as soon as practical. You guys as a policy man are deciding what's assumed. Uh, feasible and practical to do so. And I think the rest of it's, I don't think we need to create discard rings.
Okay, because it depends on the severity of the emergency right now. That's whether it's over three days, you know, or.
You know, is the state or are the fans going to come in and backfill or be on our.
So I take the last sentence. Right, the next red line I revised because before we have called the OPAP result, the reserve. It's called other post employment, but like retired adults reserve. Right now, um, it was dropped the following when he was here, we actually combined the retirement and then the OPAP together. That's why the that sentence from here. But combine two of them together. But of course, would you be a accurate report for uh OPAP also for the pension? Those are produced by annual, even the OPAP is every other year for the for the whole blow, but we do do have the small ones every year.
So we combine the funds.
It was the reserve. It wasn't a fund and. Oh, it is. John, when John was here, we separated out the two of reserve fund. Before were just a reserve, kind of like in the general fund balance of a separate lines, you know, when this is twenty percent. This is the OPAP five million. All that's it was in the. What if you look before the uh financial statement, they are all combined with the general fund. But now we separate out and call reserve funds. Yeah. Again, the policy it is, if this, um, if we want to transfer. If I transfer anything between the fund. That had to prove by the city council before it was only in the general fund, so it doesn't have to prove I think also that's another thing. But not a separate fund. Yeah.
That's fine. So 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 this is one, and I'll I'll take this one. I actually think this deserves another sentence, which says. You know, at least annually. Will evaluate the funding status and make recommendations as to addressing. Funding status, uh, because. My my guess is, it's just wild ass guess, interest rates have gone up enough, the present value of benefit should come down a fair bit. Actually, I think our funding status will improve, but we should look at it once a year. And I think. This is. If somebody really looks under the covers, this is the biggest risk area.
Even in the.
We have so little control.
Even in the audit, the range was such that if you. Hit the the favorable bond, it was had an effect of, you know, double digit millions to us, all but sugar.
I've been and and I I don't want to prescribe anything. It just seems to me. If there's any funding status account that we should look at every year, it's this one.
So I I did have a sentence here, the city maintain the internal funding. Uh, for the OPAP in the uh unfound the liability, which is special obligations based on the uh. Based on the actual report every year. So we do do that. We do fulfill our obligations. That's that's a sentence in there. Set aside a funding.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to send you since all all I want to say is. I think we're not collectively doing our job unless we evaluate that whole each year.
Are you also asking for the accrual uh actuaries or?
Yes.
Well, don't we get the annual from Calpers? That's the whole point.
Yeah, would you? And also we have a separate independent ones. We try to maintain seventy five percent. For the pension and also right now, actually, our OPAP, the retiree bills is a hundred two percent. So we already overfunded. Because John contributed five, you know, the six point five total into the into the helpers. So one is seventy five, another one is hundred.
They 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 just want a sentence that everybody knows it's an annual to do. Just to look at this and it's a super frustrating area. Because of the enormous latency in Calpers is. Um, reporting and a little bit more complicated because. You guys are in multiple pots depending upon pre and. Post the caps at which the police are in one and somebody's in another. And so. It can get away, but. I just want to sentence that everybody understands.
Yes. Um. I will, I would add that one, the sewer phone balance that one and then I kind of. The reserve requirement is twenty five percent. Uh, of annual expenditures before was include the estimated capital improvement. I took the capital improvement out because I think that's this, um. Again, I think it should be recurring revenue covered recurring expenses. A capital improvement is not like a recurring. Uh, especially right now, Paul, I don't care. Now this year they probably do like five million, next year do six million, or next 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 to do one million. So those fluctuations is a very huge. And then I think. Um, we to for the reserve, we should keep mainly keep keep the operation. Now for we have option to do the capital. That's why I take the uh including estimated capital improvement out.
So here's why I'm confused about this one. I I don't know that I care that much. But from that big debt that was presented to us.
Yeah.
The 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 reason why the sewer rates going up so much. Isn't so much the operating expense. It's they're building cash. In anticipation of substantial capital spend. So as long as nobody reads this and then is completely confused. By the this substantial rate, well, they're already confused, but. And and the reason they're confused is not necessarily that they're wrong, right? That model builds a bunch of cash. In this bucket in anticipation of money to be spent. Forward, it does it on kind of a straight line basis. Be because it's all coming, but that's why you have this double digit compound number. It's catching people by surprise. And they'll be even more surprised when they see cash building up in that fund. So it's okay if it's not required, but we should make clear to people live here that. We're in fact building cash for that spend. Because they're going to pay sewer rates. The next two, three, four years that are well above the cost of operations, which is built cash.
Yeah, this is a side comment to the council. I mean, I don't know why it's not being pointed out that most of that growth is for for capital improvement. It's not for. Because services might doubt about the rates of people serving.
There the 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 ask. From the community in terms of the sewer rate increase.
Yeah.
Which triggered the prop two eighteen process. Is it is one hundred percent based upon an engineer's report?
Yeah.
You know, that engineers report lays out. Where all, why all the money is requested, where it's expected to be needed and where it's going to go. I I don't know what else we can do to. Intricate the community other than continuing. To point to that. I mean, it wouldn't be something you would put obviously in this topic.
Yeah.
Um.
I'm okay with.
The council's in an awkward position too, because we we cannot formally take position. For or against. The prop two eighteen process.
Yeah.
But but the the information is available to the people who want.
It's it's okay. I'm okay with this change. It's just not. As long as we all understand it's not what's baked into the deck or the funding that's being asked for, and we should just move on. I I don't. Not suggesting it's in the group, the numbers are big, but. We're not slapping people with, you know, thirty or forty percent increase in year four. To build that cash, we're building cash. But somebody is going to show up at some point. When the Caffer goes out two years from now and go, what's all this cash and sewer fund? Yeah, it is what it is. Yeah.
You're already doing that because our our quarterly reports show that there's. Access, I think, of twenty million dollars in the sewer fund. And and accounts number asked. Well, you want to raise twenty eight million dollars out of out of these rate hikes, which says you've already got twenty seven million. Are you saying you're getting twenty eight on top of that? And the responsible staff was one word, yes. It's. Then the report says what it says.
We have the added benefit of being. Bad analogy, but you know, little fish dealing with somebody else's big project and our share is our share. We don't have any control. All right, carry on, Mr.
All right, so the last sentence, last section will be the.
So on the financial reporting one, we're going to add financial reporting and affiliated systems, right?
Financial reporting and uh control of related system.
Related system. So we need a paragraph or something about the systems. And then the second thing was that this does not, I mean, uh. I think, I mean, we do the. Whatever we call the Caffer now, we call it Act for.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I know it's a bad word in some language, but. It isn't. Or something. So I didn't mean that. So Act for and then but we also for like two years were really good and producing a. A a. Cash word, can you call it? Uh, it was like a. Summary that went to every every resident, et cetera. I thought that was a really good. Uh, practice. I don't know why it fell through the cracks. And, uh, you know, as much as how transparent and boring our work is, that kind of made it a little bit nicer and consumable by people. I don't know why it be. We didn't.
I think we already wrapped two speckles on it and said, you're fully staffed and have time.
Say that that's that we should strive always to have that, have a full staff.
Yeah, if there's a full staff.
Encourage to submit that and whatever the the other document is called, so that's second, third part, is a third paragraph. You can add.
But what about if we not fully staff, we don't have staff, you made a policy.
You're encouraged to submit it, you know, it doesn't say that. Okay, say that already. I'm just saying you're encouraged to do two of those. But uh, so that and then the a new paragraph about uh. That is some integrity of the systems so that the the truth of the data, you know, can be verified and validated so that we can. Trust our numbers.
Language like that, right? In the paragraph, if you could also deal with cybersecurity and how you guys are protecting the systems, these systems. Yeah, with financial systems, yeah, or for how how our financial systems are hard.
Do you want to write that, June, or do you want uh, John to write that? I'm sure he's dying to write that.
We do have.
You don't, you really don't want to get a writing, because I'll write it a lot, but it's.
That's something that's achievable by a little town by borrowers, right? So you have to write something that says that we're trying to make the integrity of the data.
I have the procedure I did for my company.
We will have a procedure too. Yeah, wrote by the hour, uh, the risk pool, the uh, the. Risk that company. Yeah, we do have a a cybersecurity uh, policy.
I'm saying the language would be a be a a target, a goal, not process, not a procedure. We don't want to, you know, just language.
Where do you keep the data? Where is the data physically?
It's on the server, it's here.
So we have a server here. Is that server backed up to someplace in the cloud?
Yeah, I think it's all in the uh, the on our server. We have a backup on the server. We don't. We don't have on the cloud, it's a special financial data, we can access through.
It was a law that California data had to stay in California. So we could not actually put it on this on the cloud and send it because we didn't know where it ended up. I think that law has now been. Modified or whatever, so that uh, with all the campaigning by Microsoft and all these people. Uh, but there is still a restriction that I have a statement.
Yeah, but Microsoft, Microsoft competes with military contracts and they would not allow.
They built data centers.
Right, in the U S.
Exactly, so we, we would have to find a special data center that guarantees that will not leave state of California.
Well, you just have to pick one that's.
There is something more contributed, and I think it's changed, so it's possible for us to use web-based software, not just stick to cloud server. But that was the restriction why we have if it's built server under the finance records desk. Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to.
Well, I know my, I know, I know Microsoft is first approved, so that 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 data has to be in the U S. And so if that's the case, I don't know.
I just say that uh, we need to have systems that uh, we can trust and have it.
John can write that sentence, but one sentence page. To state the state the goal. I gotta, I gotta. You're not ready to make any words. Okay.
Yeah, it's an interesting question. Is do California cities have to keep data in California? There's some, there's something there that I'm not.
Database someplace. Get it back with.
P G N E has this requirement.
Yeah.
So P G N E can also send the data to the cloud.
So, huh, this is all just state, this is all, because I know the D F D does it all the time, and that's perfectly acceptable under the NEST. So if you use a NEST server. Um, and Microsoft is NEST server. Uh, you can store your data there and you're you're golden. And then all you have to do is send encrypted files up to. The server and then you can have your local server. And that Microsoft server and they're just parallel, they're just talking to each other.
Until a twenty-one year old puts it on Discord. So last, last page. There are a lot of changes to this capital assets, so that's the definition of what.
Is it, and and so this is where I had accounting, I go, I didn't understand. Did you mean to say capital assets are initially valued at historical cost? Except that's before they're depreciated, right? I didn't understand.
Store them.
Oh, initially, yes.
And then you depreciate against. Look, I didn't understand what the point is.
But the asset lives at its original value until it's taken off the books.
Yeah, but.
Accumulated depreciation.
Subject to accumulated depreciation. So for the way their value.
That's an asset management depreciation. Why don't we do depreciation?
To to ensure their presentation will come down to grass.
Just city spending, no, that's not. No, there's no way for tax, so depreciation is meaningless. I mean, it's this, what if I didn't know? That's why it's just to have a useful life to know, okay, this computer, this roof is forty years old, so that's got a new one, but not for. For the tax event.
If we don't have a standby generator, that is not ten years past, it's just.
Thirty year generator, anyways, it's about died, so. My thing also.
Put that on the calendar by new generator.
Donated capital. I didn't know that.
Oh, or somebody, if somebody donate something to us, it it's like art, especially art, those type of thing. We use a value at the report at the.
That's an interesting question. Do we have a procedure for somebody like to donate land for a park? Even if we don't have, we'll create.
As soon as you decide to give us.
It's not a problem.
I know. Okay, so this this thresholds, are they from the eighties or are they okay?
Um, I need to revise the threshold, those are from the eighties, so that's the standard actually by the auditor. Yeah.
Like, I mean, five thousand dollar equipment, I mean, doesn't gave have a.
Yes, these are, actually, I I bring that question when I went to conference for G F O A. But I think that's if you have like uh, uh, the federal projects, they will, um, the facts require you. Give them the report on anything above five thousand dollars, how what you're spending on. That's what five thousand capable is not mandatory requirement for. How to capitalize anything above, you know, five thousand. We can, some city already changed to ten thousand, something twenty, twenty, twenty-five thousand. But it is five thousand initially start is because the final budget and you have to report anything above.
I understand, but as a city, do we want to change this to be higher? Does it, does this, does this cause any, you or. Gave any heartburn to have this limited?
Uh, actually, no, because right now even the computer is under five thousand with, unless we blow a whole box, like, uh, you know, even the chairs in here. If you count individual one, it's all under five, but you can do.
Problems, because I think it's, I would have no qualms, but raising the limit if this is causing you operational issues.
We don't have barely anything. Yeah, if anything, it will be generator. Um, I think the last, last paragraph, we just about talk about the true interest during the capital assets construction period. Um, that's in case if you borrow money and then you're doing construction, you're going to capitalize that interest, that that's all it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so we have a few people who are gonna bring some, uh, send you comments. You just write.
Yes, right.
I will send it to June.
I have pensions, you've got the. You guys got.
For the whole city.
I will not send my procedure to the city to follow to make it so they can make.
And then we can mark it up and be done, right?
It'll only be attached.
And I'm sorry, and you are gonna do a definition of C I P.
Yes, yes.
Okay, let's go back to the agenda or I'll be done.
Um, I think we are done.
Twenty second. Why are we having two meetings? Do you do that to share with everyone?
Well, twice that, and I would like to um. Discuss the financial uh, the for the budget. Um, so what we're gonna present into the city council. Uh, I have to tell you, it's not gonna be hundred percent, probably like a whole two hundred pages or build a certification document, no. Uh, it will be like mainly for financial information, what what like revenue source of the company and what's spending, we're gonna. We're gonna spend it all. Also, we introduce the first review of the C F P program. Uh, we need a definition of the C F P program now. Uh, so see what project actually we are presenting to the city council. Um, those are, those those type of data, mostly it, most likely is for financial information. Now for like right up, you know, that kind of stuff, so.
When are we gonna go through the audit report?
The audit report, um, I thought we already.
Which part do you want to go through? Because we sent our comments to her and she actually submitted to the council.
I did change the, yeah, I did change the.
We all got a moment, remember, we all did.
Well, we all did sections of the uh, of the audit report.
Yeah, so that was so that uh, we could accelerate the process of.
Okay.
Of giving them to June so she could submit it, so.
Alright.
And she accepted all of us.
Yeah, which which I did incorporate all the uh, the comments of what I received. Yeah.
Uh, that was the version that takes a village to.
I do recall that now, yes, I did. And I did the wrong ones. I did wrong.
I must be suffering, Jeff, but I go.
Okay, alright, okay, so last one. So we only have one agenda topic, but it's a. I hope it's not two hours. I mean, we're not really there to. Everybody not about the budget towards, didn't making sure that uh, you know, at that level. Only the budget that kind of makes sense, the ratios kind of look reasonable. You have your assumptions, you know, you are, what kind of staffing rates you're consuming, the capital, et cetera, right? So those are some assumptions that are already counted as opposed to, you know.
And you're not going to go through, who goes watch trainings? I don't think so. We will, we will, actually, I'm going to present a. Um, since we all know found accounting, so presenting uh, by each, by the, just like the category, general fund is the big one. Reserve is another one, and then also for a rest, the special revenue from major is for transfer to C F P to do the C F P budget, because. That's what they're mainly for, and then also the presenting uh, the enterprise funds, which is a sewer and a solid waste. And then also the internal service funds, I do each by by fund, presenting by fund to you guys to review. Uh, this is how we, uh, this this, do the revenue assumptions for each funds and the how we uh, spending the fund, the money, and then this is the fund balance.
Yeah.
That's the.
Property tax is going to be driven by the county's assumptions or maybe make assumptions around.
Actually, we did actually um, H D L does our assumptions, we just had a meeting with H D L consultant. Yeah, the same thing for sales tax. However, we we have a consultant for U U T as well, but we're not uh, adopting that their opinion, because I think their information was old. We based on the uh, current economic uh, to to the assumption on U T tax.
One year, I think somebody sent us a spreadsheet with with twenty tabs, you know. Uh, that's not our job to review that, so. I mean, that was a painful way.
We're uh, uh, I'm not on such especially now, uh, maybe also.
I don't, I don't, you remember? Were you there?
Kind of, lot and lots of things came next cell, right? Uh, and then.
He's on the special?
No, that's what I'm saying. Review whether the police department filled out their spreadsheet correctly. That's not our bill.
And I, that's.
I will got one here.
Yeah, I, so do you, I'll try to look at it. I may try to log in, but I'm in a dinner in Miami. Next month, okay. Okay.
Thank you.